People thought it was a lot more.
Yeah, well, somebody brought in.
All right.
Because they have a business.
We will move on and we're back from our break, so we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our 6.10 Consideration of Presentation and Discussion of the Draft Climate Adaptation Plan. And this is going to be presented by Michelle and Shannon from the Community Development Department.
Good afternoon, Board. We are here this afternoon to present an update on a part of the Lake County 2050 project, the Climate Adaptation Plan, which is a part of the project but moving along its own timeline due to funding that the county received in collaboration with the RRA and RCD, the APGP grant. So that has funded the work on this plan, and that work will be wrapping up with the grant deadline of January 30th. So this is going to be a short update and a brief discussion about the goals, actions, and strategies that we're planning to have included in the Climate Adaptation Plan and an opportunity for both the public and the board to give some input before we have a public draft. So if we could make Jacqueline, hi Jacqueline, and she's going to do a short presentation. Thanks Jacqueline for being here.
Hey Shannon, I will go ahead and share my screen. And just want to confirm, is everyone able to see my screen?
We can.
Thank you for confirming. Good afternoon Supervisors, so let me advance the next slide. So this is the agenda for this presentation. We'll start with introductions to the project team, provide an overview of the Climate Adaptation Plan, summarize the process and the results of the climate vulnerability analysis, go over the pillars of landscape resilience, provide an overview of what is going into the Climate Adaptation Plan document, and then go over next steps in the process. So this project is being led by county staff through the Community Development Department and the Office of Climate Resilience in partnership with the cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport and the Lake County Resource Conservation District. On this slide, we've also listed several of the county departments that have participated in reviewing and providing feedback on project materials throughout the process. My name is Jacqueline Prossman-Rohr with Placeworks. I'm the Project Manager on the Consultant Team, and I'm joined today by Tammy Seal, Principal in Charge on the Consultant Team. So to start off with a bit of project background. This effort began with the establishment of the Community Risk Reduction Authority in 2018, and then the formation of the Lake County Office of Climate Resiliency in 2022. The Community Risk Reduction Authority, in coordination with the Office of Climate Resilience, adopted the Pillars of Landscape Resilience in 2023. And then later that same year, the county, in partnership with the Resource Conservation District and the cities, were awarded the California Adaptation Planning Grant for the Equitable Climate Safe Project. In 2024, the project team began developing the Climate Vulnerability Analysis, the Countywide Evacuation Study, and the Climate Adaptation Plan concurrent with the Lake County 2050 General Plan Update. So I'll now provide an overview of the Adaptation Plan. The goal of the Climate Adaptation Plan is to develop a roadmap for building climate resilience across Lake County, including the cities of Lakeport and Clear Lake. In the context of this plan, adaptation means making changes in response to current or future conditions, usually to reduce harm and to take advantage of new opportunities. And resilience means the ability of communities to withstand, recover, and learn from past disasters to strengthen future response and recovery efforts. So this process identified the most vulnerable communities, natural systems, and built assets through the Climate Vulnerability Analysis. And the strategies and actions in the Adaptation Plan itself will be integrated with the existing pillars of landscape resilience to create a cohesive approach to resilience across all sectors. The Climate Adaptation Plan will provide practical and feasible solutions to reduce climate risks, considering existing resources, gaps, and capacity constraints with clear pathways for implementation. This plan is being developed based on the four-step process outlined in the California Adaptation Planning Guide. During the first phase of the project, the project team initiated the process by defining the scope of the Climate Vulnerability Analysis. Phase two was focused on assessing vulnerability or the degree to which populations and community assets will be affected by climate change hazards. And the development of the vulnerability analysis itself was the main product of this phase. And now we're currently in phase three of the process, which focuses on defining the adaptation framework, which in this case is the Pillars of Landscape Resilience, and developing strategies and actions for each of those pillars. The next phase, phase four, will focus on implementation, where funding will be secured for programs and actions listed in the plan. Implementation will be monitored and evaluated, and the plan may be adjusted over time to account for capacity and needs of the Lake County community. So the Climate Adaptation Plan is intended to be a living document that supports other plans and programs throughout Lake County, and therefore integrates with several other plans to do so. The county and city general plans can use the Climate Vulnerability Analysis to inform long-term climate resilience policies and programs. The Climate Adaptation Plan can use the Community Wildfire Protection Plan to coordinate wildfire fuel reduction projects and evacuation route protections. The Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan can act as a tool to implement the CAP with the CAP's long-term climate-focused strategies and the LHMP's near-term hazard reduction projects updated about every five years. The capital improvement plans of the county and the cities can also act as implementation tools with climate vulnerability analysis and strategies informing infrastructure planning projects for resilience. The Drought Resilience Plan is a topic-focused plan supporting over 80 small water systems in the county, and the CAP can provide a broad framework for implementing drought preparedness strategies. And then finally, the Blue Ribbon Committee on the Rehabilitation of Clear Lake provides recommendations for rehabilitating Clear Lake, which can be incorporated into the CAP to support the economy, ecosystems, and heritage of the area. So now I'll briefly go over the Climate Vulnerability Analysis. To start off with, what is a vulnerability analysis? According to the California Adaptation Planning Guide, the primary guidance document for these types of analyses across the state, a vulnerability analysis is an assessment of how a changing climate may harm a community and which elements are most vulnerable to its effects. The project team used a four-step process for evaluating vulnerabilities, including identifying exposure to hazards, analyzing sensitivity of populations and community assets, and potential impacts of the hazards, evaluating adaptive capacity, which is the ability of populations or community assets to prepare for, respond to, and recover from hazards using existing resources, and then pulling all of those components together to then assess vulnerability. The vulnerability analysis evaluated how 91 different population groups and community assets across the unincorporated Lake County and the cities of Lakeport and Clear Lake were vulnerable to eight different climate change hazards. The hazards included agricultural forestry, agriculture and forestry pests and diseases, drought, extreme temperatures, flooding, human health hazards, landslide and debris flow, severe weather, and wildfires, smoke. Here are the key findings from the vulnerability analysis. We found that wildfires and smoke create the most vulnerabilities across sectors countywide. The most vulnerable populations are people of color in immigrant communities, financially constrained households, those with chronic illnesses and disabilities, older adults, people with high outdoor exposure such as unhoused persons or outdoor workers, and persons in tribal communities. The most vulnerable community assets were found to be energy and communication infrastructure and services, homes, especially older and manufactured homes, transportation infrastructure, including both state highways and local roads, agriculture as an economic driver, and then outdoor recreation and tourism as economic drivers. So city and county staff contributed to and reviewed the climate vulnerability analysis at each step in the process, and the report of the analysis is now posted on the Lake County 2050 website. We have received some feedback from the community related to the climate vulnerability analysis via an online survey. These are a few quotes from one of the open-ended questions asking the community members for their ideas for resilience in Lake County. We heard the importance of rehabilitating Clear Lake, undergrounding electrical lines, and regular controlled burns, and the use of cattle and livestock grazing to limit fuel for wildfires. For populations, we heard making local homeownership a priority and ensuring all voices are heard and considered in this process. For specific ideas, we heard finishing the Middle Creek Floodplain and Wetland Reconnection and creating micro grids at water plants, filters, and emergency operations center. And then more recently, the project team has facilitated several stakeholders discussions, hosted a Community Risk Reduction Authority Town Hall, and held city and county staff coordination meetings to get their input on successes, gaps, and potential adaptation solutions for the Adaptation Plan. The project team took the results of the vulnerability analysis and integrated them with the Pillars of Landscape Resilience, which I'll now go over. So adopted in 2023, the Pillars of Landscape Resilience Framework is based on the Tahoe-Central Sierra Initiative. With feedback from local tribes, the images for the pillars were then adapted to better reflect Lake County. This framework recognizes the interdependence of ecological and social systems and provides metrics for measuring progress towards ecosystem and community resilience. There are 10 pillars in total representing the desired landscape outcomes. These include air quality, biodiversity conservation, carbon sequestration, economic diversity, fire-adaptive communities, fire dynamics, forest resilience, social and cultural well-being, water security, and wetland integrity. Each of these components are now being incorporated into the Adaptation Plan, and I'll now provide an overview of the contents of the CAP. So the plan itself covers the unincorporated areas of Lake County, along with the two cities, and will be organized by the Pillars of Landscape Resilience and has a long-term planning horizon similar to that of a general plan. The plan will contain background sections summarizing the climate vulnerability analysis and local knowledge and lived experiences from community engagement across the county. And the resilient strategies and actions will be based on the Pillars of Landscape Resilience, identifying feasible solutions, and providing multiple benefits where possible. And the project team does recognize the great work that is already happening across the county, and therefore, the plan will highlight existing partnerships and programs wherever possible. The resilient strategies are organized by goal, strategy, and action. The goals are broad outcomes or end states describing desired future conditions. The strategies are policies, programs, and approaches to achieving the goal. And the actions are the implementation steps for each strategy. And each action contains a bit more detail, detailed information for implementation timeframe, general cost estimates, and potential funding sources. The Adaptation Plan will contain one goal per pillar, including the following. For air quality, advancing community resilience to smoke and poor air quality events. For diversity conservation, the county's network of native species and ecological communities is healthy, abundant, and distributed across the landscape. Carbon sequestration, enhance carbon sequestration capacity across forests, ag and working lands, and wetlands. Economic diversity, sustainable and resilient nature, natural resource-based economy. For fire-adaptive communities, fire-prepared and resilient communities with the capacity to manage desired fire and suppress unwanted fire. For fire dynamics, fires burn in an ecologically beneficial way and socially acceptable way. Forest resilience, resilient forest ecosystems that provide essential ecosystem services, support cultural heritage, and sustain economic opportunities. Social and cultural well-being, a community connected to nature to recreate, maintain, and improve overall health. Water security, reliable, safe, and equitable access to clean potable water. And then wetland integrity, protected and restored wetland and riparian ecosystems provide essential ecosystem services. provide essential ecosystem services. So this slide shows some of the example strategy concepts under four of the ten pillars. For biodiversity conservation, it's strengthening habitat connectivity, invasive species management program, and protecting and restoring aquatic habitat and water quality. Under water security, water quality monitoring, water supply infrastructure and emergency coordination, and drought resilience. Under cultural, social and cultural well-being, integrating public health into emergency planning and outreach, expanding access to climate resilient resources and resilience hubs, and then strengthening tribal co-management of natural resources. Under economic diversity, the concepts include supporting climate resilience ag practices, fostering a healthy and sustainable tourism and recreational economy, and ensuring equitable hazard preparedness access for small businesses. And then as for next steps, this shows the overall adaptation plan development timeline. As mentioned previously, the project began in 2023 with outreach associated with the Lake County General Plan update occurring from 2023 and 2024. And then the climate vulnerability analysis was completed earlier this year and is now available on the Lake County 2050 website. And we are currently in plan develop in the plan development phase, conducting outreach and engagement activities, and drafting the strategies and actions for the plan. And then once adopted, the plan will be the the implementation phase will begin, which will likely be this winter and beyond. So as far as next steps, we'll also be releasing the climate adaptation plan for review by local tribes before the formal public review period. We'll be holding other study sessions as well with the Lake Forks, Lakeport City Council this evening, Clear Lake City Council on November sixth, and the Lake County 2050 General Plan Advisory Committee and local area plan advisory committees on October twenty-seventh. And then we also encourage you and community members to visit the project website at lake county 2050.org. So we are hoping to get your input on the climate adaptation plan and therefore have one discussion question for your commission or for your board to consider. And the question is, what are your biggest concerns related to implementing climate hazard mitigation, adaptation, or resilient strategies in Lake County?
All right. Yep. To the President about you.
Thank you very much for this update. It's really hard to talk about one specific aspect because this is basically like the big thirty thousand foot level general plan because I just don't know that we can have any conversation about what we envision on our future development and where things should go without identifying climate change in the first place. So to me, it's not a separate topic, it's an embedded topic. So my, my, my comments will be a little bit larger than just the climate action plan. Number one, if you can go back to goal number five, that, that, that one kind of bothers me a little bit, and I, I would like to at least have a brief discussion and sorry, number four, a sustainable and resilient natural resource-based economy. I'm just going to be blunt, that is a life of poverty. And I want a value-added economy because the most natural, you could pull diamonds out of the ground and be one of the poorest countries in the world, right? But you can also have the most unnatural and be the richest in the world like Silicon Valley. Like, I want something more than just pulling natural resources from our ground and selling that at the lowest price possible and calling that an economy. And I really want to push us as we discuss these things to go a little further where there's value added to things either we bring in or maybe resources we pull from the ground. But this concept of natural resource economy just seems like a very low-level vision of where we can bring the economy, and I'd like to push us to go a little further. A value-added is where it's going to be. Every level that you add something to a natural resource is going to lead to a higher level of value, which trickles down. And so I, I just, that to me is part of the example of why Lake County is what Lake County is. We've never really gone further than that because we've struggled. And so I just want to kind of highlight that, that I wish it was differently phrased to really push us to the next level of what an economy could really look like because that's economic mobility rather than what we already have currently. But, so to me, my biggest concern overall is, what is this going to do to development? I mean, are we going to add more layers of burdens and barriers and obstacles? We want housing, we want commercial development, whether that's manufacturing, retail, whatever the future holds for us. And I, I get concerned about that. And so to me, I kind of really, I, I, I almost want to dwindle it down in my mind to what makes a safe environment for me to be able to develop and make sure that whatever I develop, we don't have to necessarily be so afraid about it. And, and it's how do we reduce the wooie all around us? And we came and talked about the general plan and where we were, and I was a little, little frustrated that there was so many, so little amount of parcels that seemed to be looked at for changing the zoning. I think zoning is one of the most important parts of building a climate resilient area. And I just, I, I was a little bummed that there was only very few parcels being changed. In my mind, you have our community growth boundaries, which can have a whole bunch of different types of zones. Around there with a nice buffer, you surround that by agriculture, and hopefully, we can create incentives so that infrastructure can occur around those community growth boundaries. And then in between agriculture and, and the rest is the wooie. And agriculture can help protect from these climate change issues. Granted, it's maybe still going to be difficult for drought and other things, but we just said fire and smoke are our biggest issues. And if we don't change the zoning and don't really incentivize agriculture in a way that can protect our communities, and we're not looking for a higher level of value of economy than just natural resource economy, I guess my question is, what are we really changing? And so that, that is my concern for this whole project is, we can't keep doing, I, I, I'm almost certain if we look at the way, at least what I last saw in the last update of the general plan that was brought to us, I bet you I could look at nineteen ninety or early two thousand, and it's probably not all that different, except we're using new words because of our, of how we've evolved and what we say. So I just, that, that's my personal opinion. I don't know if there's support for that, but I really want to push for, I don't want to ask if I develop this, is it safe? No, I want to create those safe situations so that a lot of good development can happen in the right way. And then nature is nature, and we, we want to keep nature, but we definitely want to contain where it is that we're planning to develop and make it as simple as possible. And I, I'm worried about the burden we're going to place where we, we have the Hape, we have all these things, and then nothing will happen because we actually aren't changing how we're viewing our community and how it can develop. I'll stop. I'm sorry if that was very negative.
Supervisor Owen.
I don't know if anybody else had an issue with the attachments and this information coming through on Granicus. It, I did not receive it.
It was just a memo as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
That's all I got to.
Because I didn't, I wasn't able to read ahead on all this. Thank you.
We can send out the PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you.
I'm getting a message from Michael Green. This is the same comment.
Well, my biggest, first of all, I think everything's pretty well covered in here. The stuff that I would have asked about have come up in the plan or with survey comments. But I guess my biggest concern would be having the, there's a lot of climate mitigation that needs to be done. Where are we going to get the money to do it all? And where are we going to get the staffing? Because we have a massive amount of things going on right now. So that's my big concern. We can have these great plans, but if we don't, we don't have funding sources, then that, that's an issue. So that, I guess that's my biggest concern.
Yeah, I think that's the case with a lot of these plans that we're developing, including the Hape, right? We saw a lot of like, good strategies in there, but a lot of them are dependent on county staffing, county funding, and, you know, this is not going to be dissimilar, but without the plans and without the data, it's very hard to procure the grant funds to move forward. So it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg, but, and also, this is a very long-range plan, like the general plan. So whereas like the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan and some of the other plans mentioned here are more short-term, really focused on strategies, this is a little bit more of an overarching plan to look more seriously at the, at the big picture.
Thank you. So I'll go ahead and open it up to the public at this time to see if anybody has comments about this and come up to the mic and there you go.
Getting dizzy looking at that.
Good afternoon, Chair Crandall, Vice Chair Rasmussen, and Board members, or supervisors, sorry. Margot Cambara, member of the General Plan Advisory Committee, speaking for myself. So the climate adaptation plan prompts proactive water security measures. South County is no stranger to wells going dry. High Valley and Spring Valley residents have water availability concerns. And Lake County's Big Valley groundwater basin is subject to state monitoring. Lake County Board of Supervisors Vice Chair Rasmussen commented at the October Big Valley Advisory Committee meeting that if the county's groundwater is not managed well, the state could step in again. It is in Lake County's best interest to manage its resources well, especially groundwater. These following suggestions may get us to groundwater security and sustainability. First, promote through revising or creating ordinances, A, for smart and sustainable use of water for ag and development, B, supporting water conservation, drought management, preparation for drought, and use of technology to conserve water. And two, review discretionary use permit applications for smart and sustainable use of water. Revise county ordinances and regulations to make permittees accountable for water usage estimates. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any on Zoom? All right. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the board, I think. Go ahead.
Just a question based on some of the comments that were made, just made me think about, is there a thought of how to protect our creeks? We were just talking about earlier about the co-management of the lake. Mr. Montez brought up the creeks. I asked if that was the co-management of the lake and the creeks because again, the source that goes into the lake is as important to manage and maintain properly because you're never going to change the outcome in the lake or the output coming into the lake if you don't look at the source. Are we, out of the climate action plan, is it adaptation or?
Adaptation.
Adaptation. I was wrong. Is there any suggestions on how to handle wells? I know it is one of the most sensitive topics, but when, I know I've had conversations, I, I know it's not a popular thing, but Yolo County Flood Control, they're concerned that the water is not going into the lake, which is our similar concern. If the creeks don't have water, then the fish don't have water, and that's also our drinking water. It all, it, it, it's all one big ecosystem. And is there any conversation about looking at restrictions on proximity to creeks when it comes to well drilling for future wells? Would this come out of this type of conversation with the climate adaptation plan? Or is that a completely separate topic?
I do know that we have a creek setback ordinance that we would like to work on at some point that's separate from all of these efforts that we're mentioning. I don't know that it's specific to well drilling, that maybe, I'm not sure if that's regulated by the Water Board more or like EH, for example. But overall, as far as development from creeks and setbacks, we are looking into that, or it's at least on our docket of things to do. And then we also do have that in our waterway combining zoning code and the grading ordinance, there are setbacks required from creeks and waterways. Have anything related to the CAP?
And when you say it's on your docket, on the docket as in it will be a recommendation within the CAP or completely separate conversation?
Do you know about the CAP?
Jaclyn, could you say whether or not that has come up in the CAP?
So in the adaptation plan, there has been some discussion of management of creeks related to septic systems, not necessarily wells, but there are more general strategies relating to managing the creeks, recognizing they flow into the lake. So we have a couple of actions, draft actions that are related to that. And we could take a closer look at specifically groundwater and wells if, if the board would like.
Because I, I know I've had that conversation with EH, and you're correct that it would be going through EH. I'm sure the state water board would be involved, but it's a conversation, I think, that's really sensitive, difficult, but absolutely critical that we have that conversation at one point very soon, if not already should have.
Thank you. We'll take that into consideration.
I think with regard to creeks and, you know, waterways that lead into the lake, whatever it may be, I don't see it necessarily as a climate issue. It's more of a man-made issue. We aren't clearing the vegetation, we aren't removing sediment, we're not, we're not, well, the state puts restrictions to, to our, to getting licenses for this as well. You know, there is a way to do it, but it, so I, I just see it as it's a man-made issue, but if there's a way we can tie it in so that if our plan's in place and we can use that to inspire the state to give us permits to do some of the work, that would be great too. So I, I mean, I just bring that up because you brought up creeks.
And, and I appreciate that, and I think that you're not incorrect in what you've seen and what you've experienced and what we've already been presented on here as well. But I think during droughts, it exacerbates the problem and hence being a climate change issue simultaneously. So I think that it, it kind of touches on both.
So, I don't know, I just, I wanted to highlight that, you know.
In regards to creeks, we also, there's an aggregate resources management plan that's part of the general plan, but we held on it for this round, and it's something that we intend to address once we have completed the work that we're currently doing. So that's another opportunity for us to look at strategies around creeks when we get to that point.
Thank you. Any other, I went from the board. If not, I think we are to approve the, wait, yeah. No, that's the wrong one, I'm sorry. I don't know why I had that. I think it's just, yeah, I think it's no action, right? Yeah, no action.
I did just want to add that we also have been out in the, at the community, I'm sorry, the municipal advisory council meetings. I think by the end of the month, we will have hit all of them, but SURF who Yeah, they've had some, some issues getting scheduled and all of that. So if you are part of a community, but you haven't had a chance to participate in one of those meetings and would like to make input, certainly you're always welcome to submit a comment card on lakecounty2050.org regarding any parts of the project. But if you have comments specific to the CAP that you would like to see included before we issue the public draft, then now would be a good time to watch one of these presentations and, and take a look at the climate vulnerability analysis, and then you could give us feedback online as well as through any of these meetings that we'll be holding over the next couple of weeks still.
They'll be available on the tenth. I don't know, we'll set that up or however, the tenth of November. Their, their meetings fall on the second Monday, and for the past two, like even this, luckily, the holiday falls on a Tuesday, and I guess we're celebrating it on a Tuesday rather, you know, and taking the day. So the tenth still falls in line with the, with the every second Monday. So I don't know if we can, if I need to connect you or if you're already set to meet with somebody, we can work that out.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll work on that.
Yeah, just a quick question. I, I appreciate that the CAP is being looked at kind of more globally where different jurisdictions are involved with this. And if you don't mind just talking about the general plan, since the general plan does bump up against city jurisdictions, will there ever be a presentation to say, here's what your neighboring zoning will look like and things like that? Or is there not that conversation happening?
I haven't heard of that conversation yet, but I'll be at Lakeport City Council tonight and Clear Lake City Council in November. So we'd be happy to have those discussions with the cities if they'd like us to make a presentation on the general plan.
Just because, you know, knowing how their zone versus Just because, you know, knowing how their zone versus your zones align, I think matters. So that's why I bring it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
So we appreciate it and for all your work. All right.
Thanks.
We'll now move on to our next item, which is 6.11, Consideration of Resolution Adopting the Lake County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and B, Consideration to Accept and Adopt the Lake County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. MJHMP, CAO Parker.
Thank you, Chair. Sheriff Bingham has offered to move this item to a date to be determined.
All right.
I'm happy to approve right here, right now.
All right, we approve. I still have to open it up for public, right? If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on the pulling and moving of this item. Not hearing or seeing any, we'll bring it back to the board and we will close this item and see it on a date to be determined. All right, let's see. Going to go through the items that we're going to pull and, you know, move to different dates real quick. Is that okay?
Either way.
Yeah, so we got that one, that one. Okay, so we're going to go to 7.4, Consideration of Proposed 2026 Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting Calendar. That will be moved to a different date to be determined as well?
Yes, since Supervisor Pisca had to leave early, I thought it might be wise to move it to a future date when she's here.
Okay, and that has to do with the calendars. And so I did read it, right? Yeah, 7.4. All right, so I'll open it up for the public. If there's anyone that has a comment about moving that. All right, I'll close that and we will move that to a date to be determined as well. 7.5, Consideration of Agreement Between County of Lake and Sacramento Behavioral Health Care Hospital LLC for Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospital Services and Professional Services Associated with Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospitalizations for Fiscal Year 25 and 26. And CAO Parker.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Director Jones has agreed to move this item to the 28th for a time to be determined.
Okay. All right, so I'll open it up for the public if there's anyone that would like to speak on that. Seeing any, I'll bring it back to the board and we will see that on the 28th. All right. 7.6, Consideration of Agreement Between the County of Lake and Vista Pacifica Enterprises Incorporated for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services in the Amount $750,000 for Fiscal Year 25 and 26. CAO Parker.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Director Jones has offered to move this item to the 28th for a time to be determined.
All right. Not seeing any issues with that, I'll open it to the public if there's anyone.
No issues.
All right, I'll bring it back to the board and we will see that on the 28th as well. 7.9, that one is Consideration of Approval for Lake County Health Services to Accept Donations of Up to $9,999 Until June 30, 2026 in accordance with the county's donation policy.
Thank you, Chair. Director Arton has requested that this item be moved to a future date and a time to be determined.
All right, I'm not seeing any pins up, so I'll open it up to the public if anybody has a comment or concern about this being moved to a later date. Not seeing any, I'll bring it back to the board and we will see this added date to be determined. 7.12, Consideration of Quarterly Report of Construction Contract Change Orders Approved Under the Delegation of Authority to Public Services Director for the Lake County Sheriff Administration Facility Renovation Project. CAO Parker.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know if Director Ewing wants to speak to this, but he did offer to move this item to a future date to be determined.
All right, it looks like we have no, pins up, I'll open it up to the public if anybody would like to comment on moving this. Not seeing or hearing any, I'll bring it back to the board and we will see that at a future date to be determined. Supervisor Sabatier.
I was just going to say this is an easy one to move forward on and if Director Ewing is here, I don't know if we have to pull it or if we can, to me, this is a two-minute item, but just putting it out there.
Mine was made if it's a short item.
I mean, if anybody, are you okay with that, Lars?
Absolutely.
So I haven't closed it yet, right? So I will open it back up. I've already read it off, which is Quarterly Report for Construction Contract Change Orders Approved Under Delegation of Authority to the Public Services Director for the Lake County Sheriff Administration Facility Renovation Project. Lars Ewing.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I apologize. I was trying to save some time on your agenda, but it should be very quick. This is the second quarterly update to your board for the delegation authority that you granted for, specific to this project. The previous update back in June, I believe, had two change orders included in that, which change order one and two that are, that are listed in the agenda and also attached for, for your reference, CCO one and CCO two. The two new change orders, CCO three and CCO four, again, are new. They were approved by me under the delegated authority and as a part of that authority, it requires me to come back on a quarterly basis to update you on the status of that. Those two change orders, again, are relatively straightforward. The first change order had to do, let's see, with, bear with me, primarily the traffic flow change in how the patrol vehicles would be both ingressing and egressing. It was a request from, from the sheriff's office, I think wisely so, and it resulted in the need to relocate certain facilities and do some redesign. So that's the first change order. The second change order had to do with mechanical, the HVAC system in the, in the building, there were certain items that were left out of the design. The hydronic portion, it left out the, the water component of that, so that needed to be added in. And so we worked with the contractor for that. So that sums up those two change orders. I will comment also that this is likely the last, the last change order that would be under this delegated authority because we are at the threshold that's allowed by the, by the state code.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah.
All right, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody from the public would like to comment on this? Not seeing any, I'll bring it back to the board. This is information only.
That's it.
All right, thank you, Lars.
Thank you.
We'll go to 7.14. Consideration of the June 30, 2025 Report of the Lake County Pool Investments and B, Consideration of the September 30, 2025 Report of the Lake County Pool Investments. This will be moved to a future date. We're looking at November 18 or December 9. Does that sound about right?
It'll just be moved to a future date. We have to coordinate that with a consultant who couldn't be here today.
Okay. All right, so we will move that to a future date to be determined. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this? Not hearing any, I'll bring it back to the board and we'll go ahead and look at that at a future date to be determined. I don't, I didn't do 7.10, did I? No.
It was a last minute add.
Okay, Consideration of Approval to Accept $100,000 in Funding from Partnership Health Plan of California to be Utilized Over Three Years to Support Implementation of the Community Health Assessment and Community Health Improvement Plan Process.
Thank, excuse me, thank you, Chair. Director Arton has asked that, or offered to move this to November 4th to a time to be determined.
All right, I'll open it up to the public in case there's any comments about this. Not seeing or hearing any, I'll bring it back to the board for, to close and move to a later date on November 4th. All right. With that, we will go back to the top, which one do you?
7.2.
7.2, Consideration of Establishment of an Ad-Hoc Committee Regarding the Public Works Department. This was put together by myself. I brought it to discuss the possibility of having an ad hoc committee to look at the Public Works Department. As of right now, as you know, Lars Ewing is interim director and we've basically have struggled for quite some time to continue to recruit, retain and whatnot since our situation with the retired Public Works Director. So in doing so, bringing forward an ad hoc committee to look at how the structure may be, in some instances with other counties, they work under the format of having Public Works Department and parks and other departments underneath them as well. So maybe exploring that option and doing so, that may be something we can look at. That way we could avoid having to go through recidivism when it comes to finding someone and all of that, so for this position, you know. Supervisor one, go ahead.
I think it's working really well and I know I had asked this early on and I'm, I'd like to keep it like it is, is where I stand, of course. I think that they're doing an amazing job.
Go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
So we need to find some permanency. Right now it's very interim in the way that it is. My only caveat that I would request is the recommended action is to add something to not just say establishment of an ad hoc committee regarding the Public Works Department. You mentioned the Public Services Department. I think that needs to be mentioned in the creation of the, of the ad hoc committee in the sense for the public to be aware that that's what it's all about. We're not just looking at the structure within Public Works, it's the overall county structure and how Public Works fits into that. So I just wanted to at least be, be more prescriptive in our recommended action.
Just to clarify, I was referring to keeping Lars in that place permanently. Yes, current stature.
Well, that was going to be my question was, is this included discussion of combining, a possibility of combining those two?
Right.
Operations in some manner or another?
Yes, it'd be, it'd be looking at all different avenues that we can, status quo or looking into how we can just bring forth other examples of how it's worked for other counties.
Okay.
Lloyd, I seen you look up, I don't know if you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So if your board were to consider or approve the formation of the ad hoc committee under the, I think under Section Six, the committee's policy, under the county's policies and procedures, should be made by a subset of the board of supervisors, no more than two, so it could be one or two, and any other staff from county staff can be included as, as the makeup of this committee. So the suggestion here would be if your board is willing to move forward with the formation of the ad hoc committee to specifically identify the, the members of that ad hoc committee.
All right, did you start?
No, I forgot again.
All right, I mean, I definitely would be, you know, one of the main, one of the, since I brought it forward, you know, obviously I'll be on, on the committee, the ad hoc committee, but we'll look at who else can be on as well. I'm sure that Lars, are you willing to be on? I know that you're serving as an interim, but.
Long walk to say yes, but yes, of course. And I'm happy to answer any other, any other questions.
I just wanted the Public Services Director. I don't think I wanted the Public Works Director.
Oh, I see. So yeah, no, I think that with putting this together and going through could really put us in a position to find some sort of solution for what we deal with, so.
Out of respect for our vice chair, if he's interested, I don't mind, but if he's not, I'm very interested in being part of the conversation, but it's up to vice chair. I think it would be right for both vice and chair to be there because I think it's an important conversation, but just putting it out there that I have interest, but I'm okay with stepping down.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do it.
All right, all right.
And our CAO or her administrative office will be a part of this conversation as well?
Yes, well.
I haven't been asked, but yes.
I think that was our ask, yeah.
Myself or my designee?
All right, is there any other public input on this before I bring it back? All right, so it looks like right now it would be myself, Supervisor Rasmussen, Lars and a CAO, somebody from the CAO's office and Lloyd, I don't know if, yeah.
Well, if your board is ready for the action, it would be by motion, since it's, you know, at this point, it's, what's requested is board approval of this and if your board is ready, it would be a motion to form the ad hoc committee pertaining to the Public Works Department and the Public Services Department as it's outlined in the board memo with, with, board memo with membership consisting of Chair Crandall, Lars Ewing, Susan Parker and Vice Chair Rasmussen. That would be the motion.
So move.
I have a motion.
Second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. All right, we will set a meeting here in the near future so we can get that moving. All right. 7.3, should I just go down the list? There we go. Consideration of a Letter of Support for Sutter Lakeside Hospitals Proposition One, Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Funding Proposal for their Crisis Stabilization Unit Project. CAO Parker.
Yes, I'm going to have Matthew come up and just speak briefly on this.
Matthew Rothstein, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer. This letter of support was requested by Sutter and fulfilled by County Administrative Office staff, including Ben Rickelman, and staff recommend that your board approve the letter as written. My understanding is it is time sensitive, so we'll also ask you to sign relatively quickly as well.
All right.
And here is Ben Rickelman if you have additional questions.
That was a great pivot.
Go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
I, I think this is important. This is a conversation that I know I watched Health Services, Behavioral Health interact with Sutter. This actually also comes from some of the concerns that we had at Hamilton Haven and the interaction between the two entities. And I think this is a great path forward for solutions and greater access to health care that we should never, the only question is, can we still get Supervisor Pisca's signature through Adobe so that, as I'd see it's individual signatures rather than hard copies?
Yes, so that will be the plan and Johann is already prepared for that request.
Awesome, thank you.
All right. And is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this? All right, not hearing or seeing any, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I'll make the, let me get there. Move to approve the letter of support for Sutter Lakeside Hospital for their Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure BHCP Round Two Unmet Needs Funding Application for their Crisis Stabilization Unit Project.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries four zero. We will work to get that signed, I'm sure, today so we can get it out. All right. Now we're at 7.7 and we will look at the consideration of the following Advisory Board Appointments, Mental Health Advisory Board, Central Region Town Hall and First Five Commission. It looks like we'll start off with the, okay, there we go. Behavioral Health, it's two vacancies, one, one family member of a present past consumer and one consumer, that person is Tammy Rust.
I'm on the advisory board and I would support that candidate.
All right, open it up to the public for anyone that would like to comment on this. If not, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we appoint Tammy Rust to the Behavioral Health Advisory Board.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Next would be Central Region Town Hall, one vacancy, General Membership Amanda Gonzalez. Recently, we lost one of our town council members who moved to Hawaii about three months ago, lucky him, but in the meantime, we found someone else that would fill the spot. They opened it up. It took quite a couple of months to find someone to do it and Amanda Gonzalez also, also works at the senior center and lives in La Cern and I think it's a great choice, so.
What did you lose?
John Carlson. Yeah, 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 so I'm fine with it, so I'll open it up to the public for any comments. I'm not seeing any, I'll bring it back to the board for action if someone can make the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Amanda Gonzalez to the SURF.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries four zero. Next, we have First Five, there's three vacancies, three member at large, and there is Carly Swatash who's a. Next, we have First Five, there's three vacancies, three member-at-large, and there is Carly Swatash, who's a reappointment and looking for.
Yeah, and I'm also on that First Five Committee, and she's, she's a good member, I support reappointment.
I'd even go so far as saying a critical member.
Yeah, a critical member, yeah. Sorry, I'm getting a little tired.
Oh, it's okay.
So, yeah.
Do you want to make the appoint, or do you want to make the motion?
I think we have to take public comment first.
Yeah, I'll open it up for the public in case, nope, not seeing any, I'll bring it back to the board and we'll.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we appoint Carly Swatash to the First Five Commission.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries four zero. And that concludes seven point seven. Next is seven point eight, second reading, consideration of ordinance adopting Development Agreement twenty-four dash oh one for the Guanac Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project as amended. Then we'll go ahead and, there comes Michelle.
Our afternoon.
And that's how it's been.
Yeah, hello again, Michelle Iris, Senior Planner, sitting in for Director Turner on this one. So the item before you is essentially a correction to one of the actions that your board adopted on August twenty-sixth of this year. That was Resolution twenty-two-five-one-oh-two to approve the development agreement for the Guanac Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project. However, per our Article sixty-nine in our zoning ordinance, in order to do so with, for a D A or development agreement, we need to approve an ordinance. So there are no other corrections to what was previously approved or to the project. This item is to simply correct the process of approval for that development agreement, rescinding the resolution and placing the draft ordinance before the board for consideration.
All right, any questions on the board?
Just in addition, it's a second reading that we're doing today.
All right.
Thank you.
The final one.
All right, so I'll open it up to the public. Any on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Chairman, I would like to move that we adopt the ordinance, offer the ordinance for adoption for the Development Agreement twenty-four dash oh one for the Guanac Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project as amended.
The ordinance has been offered. Lloyd, did you have anything else to add?
Yeah, so it will be just by roll call by the clerk. And just to clarify, the, the as amended part is a carryover from the first reading. So it would be as it is presented to your board as far as what was been, what has been posted and uploaded in Granite, because that would be the ordinance that's up for second reading. So again, just by roll call by the clerk.
And would that be, do I need to add by, for the second reading?
Yes, that, that would be the offering of the ordinance.
All right.
Supervisor Owen?
Aye.
Supervisor Spatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Rasmussen?
Aye.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
And the ordinance passes four zero?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see, next, seven point one one, right, or C A O?
Yes, do you mind going to seven point one three?
Not at all. Mister, seven point one three, consideration of Amendment Eight to Agreement between the County of Lake and Consor for Final Design and Right-of-Way Services for the South Main Street and Soda Bay Corridor Improvement Project. Public Works Interim Director Lars Ewing.
All right, good afternoon, Lars Ewing, Interim Public Works Director. Your, your board is likely aware, or at least familiar with the, the projects that we're discussing here, South Main Street and Soda Bay Road, Road Widening and, and Utility Undergrounding Project. It's a, it's a project that has been in the works for, for quite some time. In the last four months that I've, I've been in, in Public Works, we have, we've made quite a lot of advancements on the project. I'll quickly highlight those because I think it's, it's important to understand where the project is in order to consider this, this amendment. Before I, I do talk about the, the status of the project, I'll just quickly identify that, yes, this is Amendment Eight to a, to a contract for not just design services, but it's project management services, it's environmental services, it's right-of-way services. So it is, it's a very broad, a broad contract for a very complex project. So it's, it's not, not surprising that, that the numbers are what they are. So the, the amendments itself is proposing changes to, well, to complete the, the actual final design phase. It would incorporate final design into the contract. It also incorporates some additional project management services, utility coordination, and pre-construction environmental services. And happy to talk about any of those in, in detail as you like. But the status of the project, before you consider approving the amendment, the, the project itself, South Main Street and Soda Bay Road, the initial project is, is not only road widening, but it also includes utility undergrounding, overhead utility undergrounding. We are on track, at a, at a high level, we are on track to, to meet the deadlines that we need to meet in order to access the funding at the C T C, the California Transportation Commission. So at the, at the C T C, there is right now, round figure is about five point two million dollars programmed in the, in the STIP, the State Transportation Improvement Program. We have a deadline of February of twenty-twenty-six to allocate the, the funds for construction, going in reverse engineering in order to, to get to the C T C by the, the, the next available C T C meeting. Our deadline is December first to have our, our application in. And so we have some, we have a, a short period of, of time to get the, the few things completed that we need to have completed. That, that includes design completion to a, to a essentially one hundred percent completion where the design is complete according to the design engineer. Environmental, we, we need to have not just SEQA but, but NEPA. So on the NEPA side, we, we do have NEPA completed along with a revalidation of, of that NEPA document because of the, the timing associated with it. SEQA, we have an approved SEQA document, and we're working with Community Development to come to your board next month for a, an, an addendum to the, to SEQA to incorporate night work into the project. Permit side, regulatory permits, we have three permits that are required. Two of them are in hand, U S Army Corps of Engineers permit is in hand, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board permit is in hand. California Department of Fish and Wildlife permit is being drafted now, and we anticipate that within the next week or two. And last piece, the last overall bucket is right-of-way. Right-of-way includes, there's about forty acquisitions that are required for, for the corridor, both temporary construction easements as well as actual acquisition, permanent right-of-way acquisitions. We have the bulk of those completed, we have about four or five that are, that are still remaining, and we are in, in, we have, I'll, I'll say willing sellers. We still need to get to the, to the finish line, and, and we're, we're pushing hard for that, and, and it looks like, looks like we will get there. So I, I, you know, that does not say that, that we will be there, but it, I, my, my optimism states, you know, tells me that, that we will get there. So I, I just want to make sure that you understand what still needs to be done in order to, to complete this project. So the first part that I, that I mentioned, the design, this contract, this amendment to the contract would, would allow that, that design to be completed. Consor, used to be Quincy Engineering, Consor, not to be confused with a local land surveying firm, just for, for clarity there. Consor is, is, is prepared to work, work hard and fast to, to meet the deadline. There's, there's, the, the design phase is, or the design portion will be relatively easy to, to get to the, to the one hundred percent phase, so. So with that, I will just end my, my very brief, high-level overview of this, of this relatively involved project and be available to answer any questions, whether it's for the project as a whole or for, for this amendment.
Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you, Director Ewing. I know this has been going on for a while, I, I currently feel confident that we'd be able to finish this out if we do this, but I just wanted to clarify if, if we didn't move forward on this, obviously, we wouldn't be able to get done, and that would jeopardize any funding for that project. Is that?
Yes, if, if we, if we don't, without this amendment, if your board chooses to not move ahead with this amendment, we would not be able to complete the design portion of the project, which, which would mean we, we would, we would not be, we couldn't access the, the STIP funding, which I mentioned, the five and a half million dollars, there's actually another, another five million that's, that's available for us as well. So grand total, about ten and a half million dollars of STIP funding would be at risk.
Okay, I know it's a tight timeline, but I feel confident that we can do it.
Supervisor Spatier?
Just a, a quick question, because I, there's been some other conversations. Both Vice Chair Rasmussen and I are on the A P C, you were there when we were talking about the STIP funds or the C T C funds. You said that you were looking at doing a segment of the road, is it designed for the entirety of the project or just that segment?
Yeah, the, I, I tried to clarify that in the, in the memo, the, the design and the right-of-way, the environmental, all the pre-construction phases are for, for the full corridor, South Main Street, Soda Bay Road. The, the, the construction, based on funding available, available and cost estimates, we're going to propose to phase the project with South Main Street being the, being the first phase, and that, that's the construction funding that, that we have available. So pre-construction, full corridor, construction phased approach with, with South Main Street being the first phase.
All right. Not seeing anything else, I'll open it up to the public for anyone. Anyone on Zoom? Betsy, if you can unmute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Lars, thank you, everybody, for this. I just have one question. Will this include the ability for the City of Lakeport to insert a water line so that we can have fire suppression, water flows, and hydrants at the same time?
I can answer that if. So, so the county and the, and the city are, are working right now to that end. The short answer is, we sure hope so. That, that is, that is a project that is, the, the cities, it's not in city jurisdiction, but the city certainly has an interest in that. They have a looped water line project that they have envisioned, and so we, we're, we're working with them to, to make that happen. The, the construction timing on, on this project is such that we would be looking at twenty-twenty-seven for actual road construction on South Main Street, so there is some time. The city has preliminary design plans, in fact, near final design plans for their project. So, so they do have some headway, and we have a, an internal meeting, well, internal to city and county, we have some staff is meeting tomorrow, if not the next day, as a continuation of that. So, so there is work toward that end, and, and I, I, I think there's a likelihood that it would happen. Funding needs to come through for construction, certainly, but I can verify that the, or valid, confirm that the environmental document does include the, the provision for, for water lines to go into the ground.
Ah, thank you so much.
Crossing fingers.
Thank you, Betsy. Any other on Zoom? All right, we'll close public comments.
Just wanted to clarify, because I was looking back a little bit, trying to remember Amendment Seven. If I'm correct, because there was a large number in Amendment Seven, and that happened maybe less than six months ago, I think it was in April, if I'm correct, if I remember the, the memo correctly. And I think we added something like six hundred thousand dollars, if not more. Was that for like back stuff that had been done but never paid for? And that's why it feels like there's a very short amount of time that a lot of money got spent, that we're adding a whole lot more money? Wondering if you might be able to clarify that just to help me and, and, and maybe help the public as well.
Yeah, the, the piece that was missing in Amendment Seven, as I understand it, is, is the actual design. That was primarily right-of-way was, was Amendment Seven. I'd have to look back at the exact breakdown, but I'm, I'm looking at it here. It does have some project management, some environmental, but permits, permits and right-of-way. So you're, you're really looking at environmental permits and right-of-way phase would additional work for the project in Amendment Seven, whereas this Amendment Eight is heavy on the, on the design portion. So at, at that point in time when Amendment Seven was, was approved, I was not the, the Interim Public Works Director, but my understanding is, was the focus was, let's get right-of-way done. If, if right-of-way was a fatal flaw, then all the design would have, would have been for naught. So, so Amendment Seven was, was heavy on the, on the, the non-design phase, whereas Amendment Eight is, is heavy on design.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right. With that, it looks like we have action.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would move that the Board of Supervisors approve Amendment Eight to the Agreement for Final Design and Right-of-Way Services for the South Main Street Soda Bay Road Corridor Improvement Project with Consor in the amount not to exceed four million seventy thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-one cents, which is an increase of five hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred dollars, and authorize the Chair to execute the amendment.
I second that.
Chair, do you mind if I ask one question before we vote?
Yeah, go ahead.
The funding is coming from where?
The funding for, for this is.
For this specific?
Portion is from STIP, a portion, it's a combination of a variety of different sources.
Okay, okay.
So I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries four zero. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And now we have our seven point.
Seven point one one, and Director Vich is on Zoom.
All right, so consideration of update to the Lake County Library Collection Development Policy, Christopher Vich, I see you online. Go ahead and take.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for hearing this item today. Before you today is the Lake County Library Collection Development Policy for consideration for approval. This policy guides staff in developing the collection and lets the public know the principles on which the collection development decisions are based. Its purpose is to serve as a guide to build a balanced and high-quality collection that represents a multiple, multiplicity of viewpoints. On February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, your board approved the current library collection development policy, and the changes before your board today are to affirm that this policy complies with the California Freedom to Read Act, A B one-eight-two-five, which was signed into law on September twenty-ninth, the twenty-twenty-four. So the California State Library has advised that we should add the language highlighted in blue in the attached document to our collection development pos, policy to positively affirm that it complies with the Freedom to Read Act. Complying with this state law by January first, twenty-twenty-six is important to continue being eligible for state funding for our library. So I want to thank you for your consideration of this update, and I'm happy to have any questions and answer them, and my recommended action is that you approve the update to this library collection development policy.
Any questions?
No questions.
I'll open it up to the public for any questions about this update? None on Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the update to the Lake County Library Collection Development Policy.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries four zero. Thank you, Christopher. All right. Calendars.
Calendars.
All right, so next is our calendars, who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
So going back, since we haven't had a meeting for two weeks, I attended the Big Valley Groundwater Committee Meeting and also the Big Valley Advisory Committee Meeting. Attended a Space Committee Meeting, a project, a meeting with, with a constituent about a project he has going on. I did some trash cleanups on State Highway, attended Tango Mike fundraiser, attended the Land Trust Dinner, did some follow-up to get more information on the BioChar project. Working with some community groups on a Christmas dinner project. Went to a, a Space Committee Meeting again yesterday with the other members on a review of the status of the, the new sheriff headquarters. Had a Scotts Valley Advisory Council Meeting last night. I'm going to try to attend the Lakeport City Council Meeting tonight. Looks like we will be done on time. And then, as was just mentioned, we have a, the county has a meeting with the City of Lakeport tomorrow regarding the South Main Water Line, Fire Suppression, et cetera, et cetera. Then we have a First Five Meeting tomorrow, which I will make. I'm going to try to also attend the A P C Active Transportation Plan Meeting at Lakeport City Hall tomorrow. And hoping to have some meeting with Flock Safety and the Admin Office by the end of this week regarding some new cameras. And that's it, thank you.
Okay. See, since last meeting, things, some of the things I've been involved in include, I went to the Pewter Creek Levy and nearby Hidden Valley to look at the erosion going on there, and I met with Mr. Pawan and Linda from our Water Resources, met us down there, and along with Hidden Valley Lake Security and Community Service District and a few other. and along with Hidden Valley Lake Security and Community Service District and a few other members. So, we were evaluating that, and we really need to get something done in that area. There's some major erosion going on along the levee there at Hidden Valley. So, we need to kind of start confronting that. The sixty-fifth annual celebration for Calpine, and I actually, they had gave the county a beautiful, I'm not sure what you call it. It's not a trophy, but it's over there by the TV. Yes, and that's from, that's to us from Calpine for being a great partner. So, that's much appreciated. Let me see. Later that evening, I went to the Middletown Town Hall meeting. The next day, on Friday, I met with Skeet and Kim Reese on the Big Bass Tournament, which Supervisor Rasmussen had met with us on, and then went on to check out the Fairgrounds and Canockdye Harbor Resort for a location to hold the award dinner and et cetera. I went to the Middletown, or I spoke at the Middletown Luncheon Club last week, as well as the Hidden Valley Lake Security Team. They had some great ideas and are wanting to help us out with things that they might be able to contribute to the county as far as looking for law enforcement and such. One lady there had had a, used to have a security firm, so we're going to be meeting with Mr. Luke Bigham, our sheriff, on that. Let me see. That looks like a, Thursday, I had a, I had to cancel an unforeseen issue for a meeting and couldn't attend. Coyote Valley PTO, I met with them concerning a road for another way in and out of their elementary school. I'm hoping to get that going, that more motivation and support to put it in when they bring in the new Valley Oaks Project subdivision. We'd like to have another road connecting Coyote Valley Road to the subdivision, so it's not one way in and one way out, and that's primarily for safety. I've reached out to a number of, primarily NCPA and Calpine pertaining to today's earlier agenda item with the snow cloud, snow clean power, and been doing some research in that area as well as the open loop and closed loop system. I have a meeting tomorrow morning with Paul Kelly with the Community Service District, CSD. There's a meeting in Potter Valley with the Potter Valley Alliance coming up. I don't have the date here, but I know it's this week. I don't know, are either of you planning on going to that?
Which one is it?
It's in Potter Valley. I'd have to look it up on my calendar, but I was wondering if you, if you can't make it or if Bruno can't make it, I will attend it.
You just need to know when it is, yeah?
Okay, I'll get it to you then. And I'll be working on some other issues as well this week. I have a pretty full agenda. Thank you.
Supervisor Spatier?
I'll be brief. Tomorrow, meeting with some folks who have interest in geothermal development in the District Two, and I think a little north of that, possibly District Three. Not there to say yes, just there to listen, and I'll pass on any information that I learn. First five commission, I'll just be spying in virtually and just checking in. That way, I can follow what's going on and keep up.
Hey, good.
And then, I'll be joining the Lake County Fire Protection District to spy on them and check in what's going on. I'd like to keep up on that as well. Thursday, for some unknown reason, is wide open, but Thursday is the day that I do administrative work for PEG, so all their, all our videographers' checks need to be submitted, all invoices to the county, so that always takes a little bit of time. But the rest of my time is free, which will be amazing. I'm having a meeting with Lake EDC. They're doing their regional summit that's coming up on November, I believe, it's sixth and seventh, which is great, because I'm hearing from other supervisors from Northern California that are going to be coming down. They're excited about it, and we just want to make sure that we're all set up and ready to go for that meeting with one of our directors and having conversations with them. And then, I'm going to start my, I would say, my volunteer time, but my time at the registrar of voters to help them go through the ballots. Since I am not on the election this time, I want to make sure to help out because they need all the help they can get, and I know I'm not the only one on this board that's doing that as well. So, looking forward to that. It's always fun to sit there and mingle with those that are also volunteering and helping out and just getting to know those folks. Appreciate them.
Yes, sorry, you've not done...
Oh, no, go for it.
Well, since you brought it up, yes, I'm, I had asked if I could do the same, so...
Yeah.
Should I be seeing you there?
Your name came up.
And I do have one other thing when he's done, if okay.
And then, we're, we have a check-in from time to time between the Lake County Continuum of Care and the Lake County Community Foundations as we continue to try and secure other grant funding that is not the typical grant funding that's been made available through behavioral health. Just trying to find more money to see what else we can do to get those folks off the streets. We're meeting with special districts later on that day, meeting with our CAO, and then I have a Lake County Food Policy Council meeting coming up. I just got interviewed by NACO on one of their podcasts to discuss what we've been doing at the Lake County Food Policy Council, because that was a project that I identified in, through the Counties for Economic Mobility. And so, they were really excited to talk about what's going on, what's the vision, and so, that podcast, I think, came out yesterday, and then be here for the twenty-eighth for our next meeting.
I forgot to mention Kelseyville Fire is having their hundred-year anniversary this Saturday, just so it's put out there.
They're old.
Yeah.
All right. I am going to forego my calendar. I'm having a struggle collaborating them for some reason, so I'll have more to add. I know, I have been, and he's helped me. So, I'm going to forego, and then we're just going to close that and go into closed session. Eight point one, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine, five-six-point-nine-D-one, proceeding number P-seventy-seven, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. Eight point two, conference with legal counsel, decision whether to initiate litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-D-four, one potential case. Eight point three, publicly, public employee discipline dismissal or release. Eight point four, sitting as the Board of Directors of Lake County IHSS Public Authority Conference with the A. Chief Negotiator M. Long, County Negotiator R. Dilman Parsons, A. Shemansky, K. Kelly Page, and Employee Organization Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local 2015. With that, we'll go into closed session. Thank you.